And it looks like Nikki is ready, so we're gonna get started. I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Neshova Regional School Committee tonight on September 11, 2024 at 6:30 PM. If you would like, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first item on the agenda is citizens' comments. I'm not seeing any citizens in the gallery. And therefore, we will continue on with the consent agenda. We'll start with a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda of June 5, 2024, containing draft meeting minutes of June 5, 2024, and August 29, 2024, and warrants of September 13, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second. Thanks, Erin.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much for the consent agenda. School committee chairperson update is next, but I have nothing beyond the regular agenda to update you on. Well, I could go back. There is one small detail that I do want to recognize. We have a member of our Bolton delegation has decided to step down from the school committee. And so Jesse Davis is actually no longer on the school committee, and Bolton is actually, at this time, seeking to fill that vacancy. You may also remember that Dana Ellis has also stepped down from the school committee in Stowe, and so therefore, we have a vacancy in Stowe as well. Both of these are posted on the websites of the town government, so if anyone in the public is interested in filling that vacancy, they should submit a letter of interest to the suite, and it is very quickly, and we shall proceed from there according to the regional agreement rules on how to fill that vacancy. So that is actually all I had to share. So with that, I will turn it over to our student representative. Hi, Ava, welcome. Maybe if you wouldn't mind, just introduce yourself one quick time because you are stepping up, you're gonna be the elder.
Yes, I am. Okay, my name's Ava, I'm from Lancaster, and I'm a senior this year, and this is my second year on school committee.
We're so glad you're back.
I'm happy to be back.
And I recognize that you are, your school is engaged in student government elections and that you hope to bring on a junior member?
Yes, so the elections for new student school committee representative will be held next week for a junior. The interest slash application survey went out for members of the junior class to put their names, and then we will vote next week sometime like starting Monday. And so that new representative will be here for the next meeting, which is really exciting. I'm excited. We had Wolf Day on the first Friday of the week back to school, and it was really fun, and we hope to do it again at least one more time this year, but personally, I really hope it comes back a lot more. It was really fun. Neshova Field Hockey had their annual Michelle Farnsworth game Monday night against Lemonster. JV tied 3-3, and varsity won 3-0. Money was raised for the Michelle Scholarship. Football has their first home game on Friday against Shepherd Hill, and the Activity Fair will be during Long Walk on the 19th. For the parking update, it's going well, we're on the third week of school, and everyone knows the routine, so that's pretty all settled in. The cell phone policy from the admin and teacher side of things, it seems to be going well with minimal issues. And we have themed event plans, we have themed events planned this fall through the leaders of STUCO and other student leaders, and homecoming and a community service drive for Thanksgiving. These events and Wolf Day were inspired by students' ideas and feedback. That's all I have for you.
Thanks so much, Ava. So September is a really exciting time for our public schools, and it sounds like you guys are off to a great start.
Yes.
I have one question that I'll jump in with. Can you just explain to the committee and to anybody listening, what is Wolf Day and what made it so great?
So Wolf Day, we had half day of classes, and then the rest of the day was activities that students signed up for. There was a form that went out, and you could do activities like bracelet making, you could play volleyball, you could go outside, walk the track, play outside games. And I thought it was really fun, especially without the phones. I don't know, it was just really fun to engage with other people and not have school. And I think everyone liked, everyone that I talked to liked it, and they wanted to come back.
I didn't realize that the phones stayed inside, so that's really impressive.
Yeah. That was the only time that I was four and had phones.
Any other questions for Ava? All right, well, as always, we appreciate you being here, Ava, for this update, and we look forward to welcoming you and your partner at the next one.
Yes, we'll see you guys at the next one. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thanks. All right, guys, we're gonna go on to our next item, and that is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back, everyone, to another school year, 24-25 this year. It's great to be here with you today. Had a few things to bring out and announcements in the superintendent's report. We've kicked off our new K-5, K-8, five-day schedule, can't get that out of my mouth, and all indications are it's been launched with quite a bit of success. We have some projects to work out, we know that, so we're actually meeting with NAIR leadership tomorrow. We're gonna, I'm certain, talk about some of those things and get some feedback from principals, but our principal's meeting tomorrow, so we can fine-tune what we need to do in that, but I do think that that has been a success to this point. Last year, we voted into a policy, a new communications policy, have expanded on, had expectations around things of timely communications, and then in terms of web presence and classroom presence digitally. And so all that training was conducted and done with faculty and staff at their school, so we're rolling, and I know that Bridget and Jed are gonna be working hard all throughout the fall to bring the training to our teachers, to make sure all the elements that are there are gonna be in their pages, so we're excited about that, and that's underway. Dr. Kalise Warnum came and delivered a stirring keynote address to our faculty and staff on September 3. And we really focused in on how to create welcoming classrooms in a sense of belonging through culturally proficient instructional practices. Dr. Warnum's appearance was received with high regards from our faculty and staff. We did a thought exchange and gathered lots of information from our faculty and staff, and we've got a resounding demand for her to return and expand the course offerings that Dr. Warnum did with us, if you recall, with the leadership group as well as our district equity team. So we hope to continue that relationship with Dr. Warnum. So that went really, really well. I do want to, it says introducing, and I think that's a misleading word. Ms. Murdock is not here tonight for me to introduce, but I should announce to the committee, to our community, what we put out last week, and that is Jessica Murdock has accepted the position of Director of Human Resources for Neshova Regional School District. She's coming to us from Pittsburgh State University, where she is Vice President of Human Resources there, and we couldn't be more delighted and more excited to have her join us. So once we have her on board, we'll certainly schedule time for her to come and meet the committee in person. But again, we're just delighted that she's gonna be joining us and conflicted, as we appreciate and care deeply for Ms. Ann Rusler and the wonderful job she's done leading our Human Resources Department here in Neshova. So it's, the end of the month is gonna be bittersweet on the floor for us as we transition during this time, so. That being said, I'd wanna move into the food services update, and I think I will toss it over to Mr. Mal Karen to take the next couple of items for us.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Thank you to the committee for the opportunity to update you on these items today. Before I begin, and it's not on the superintendent's report, I do just wanna do a quick thank you to Rob Freeswick and the entire facility staff for the work they did this summer preparing our buildings. What's unique about this summer, deserves a little bit of light shined on, is the fact that Mr. Freeswick was pulled into the enabling work at the high school site quite a bit, and our custodial staff, under the lead of our head custodians, really carried out the vision of being, knowing exactly what our schools needed to look like on day one without Rob being available, as usually he is at the end of the summer because of the enabling of the high school. So thank you to them. Within food services, we've had a successful start with our new partnership with Whitsons. Myra Maldonado from Whitsons is working closely with our kitchen managers to continue the success of the first few days with regards to our new systems, equipment, menus, recipes, and all those upgrades and updates that we're doing. And a huge shout-out of gratitude to our kitchen staff who are rolling with those new systems, menus, and the recipes, which are a big shift, and we're asking a lot of them, and they're really stepping up in their service to students. They're providing valuable feedback, but we think the best feedback is a positive that we're getting from students and from families with the new menus. So we encourage you to visit the nutrition services on our website for more information about our partnership and those menus and other important details. All families are encouraged to download the Whitsons Menu Planner app so that they can build profiles for their students, and it's the most, sort of easiest way to be able to view those menus and get the nutritional information and the outage and information as well. So we'll continue to update the district community on our work with Whitsons, which will include the menu tastings for students, better recycling and composting practices, and the formation of a school nutrition advisory board, which will include parents and students as well as our own staff on it. As far as students' services transportation goes, I know that Ms. Manch is here today, but in the spring, we notified you that the contract for our in-district special services transportation through ABC, in our partnership and our collaboration with them, would have a new servicer. This contract began on July 1, it was continued, was to continue through the school year in partnership with ABC and another district that was under the same portion of the contract. We evaluated transportation services provided during the summer, and it yielded the decision that we needed to cancel that contract. So our contract has now been awarded to the next responsive bidder, which has caps for kids, and all signs pointed that this was a good move, and we are in good shape with that level of transportation so far beginning this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mal Karen. And if we'll just keep the ball rolling, I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent Friend to give us an innovation pathways announcement and shift straight into the strategic work. So Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing, and thank you to the committee for giving me an opportunity to present an announcement and some updates on our strategic work. The first, as it relates to our innovation pathways welcome reception, which we held on August 26, where we officially launched our two innovation pathways programs, advanced manufacturing and engineering, and business and finance. We have 36 students enrolled in one of two pathways. The welcome reception was well-attended on the 26th. We had families and students engaged. The event was led by our coordinator, our innovation pathways coordinator, that is Bridget Hannigan. The event included short presentations from Superintendent Downing, Ms. Hannigan, and our initial program partners, as well as a special presentation from a 22-year-old entrepreneur from Austin, Texas, who gave a really impactful presentation and advice to our students. Students were able to meet their teachers, mix and mingle. I'm not sure about the mixing and the mingling part, but they could enjoy their refreshments. And they even received an Innovation Pathways T-shirt with our new Innovation Pathways branding and logo, so it was formal but casual and well-received. Ms. Hannigan has numerous future events planned, and we look forward to keeping this committee updated on our progress and momentum, including our hopeful addition of a third pathway next year.
Please feel free to carry on with your strategic work.
So the first two updates with regards to our strategic updates are related to professional development. The first about our Neshova Summer Academy, which seems like a bit ago now, but worthy of noting and celebrating. Our Summer Academy began right at the conclusion of the last school year. Participation in our Summer Academy with our Neshova educators was strong. We had 110 educators participating in one or more offerings. Offerings are listed in the superintendent's update, from training on our new literacy curriculum, to training in support of our language learners, to a Harvard at X introduction to DataWise course, a book study on the joyful teacher, and continued learning about our Renaissance Assessment and Diagnostic Suite. We also had several curriculum working groups, which are listed as well in the update, including updating our advisory program at the middle level to integrate NEFA, which is a planning resource, resource supported by the Commonwealth to help students with developing awareness of self and potential future interests for high school and beyond. And that work will be getting in middle school helps support engagement with our innovation pathways as our students step forward into high school. We also had a new course built for the high school, and that was product development, which will support students in either of our innovation pathways programs. The second update relative to professional development is about a more recent day, and that's August 26, where we welcomed our faculty and staff back to school with professional development and training. Much like Summer Academy, offerings were intended to both meet the needs of specific roles and grade levels while working to continue to address our initiatives and our larger systemic work at the strategic level. You can see the list provided in the superintendent's update, but offerings range from continued literacy training in support of our new literacy curriculum in K-5, to unit pacing and alignment for our related arts teams to support our new K-8 district-aligned schedule and train by Director Vivanche on the new IEP process for our special education teams and providers. Our high school work included the beginnings of a self-assessment phase for NEASC with a collaborative conference scheduled for them next fall, and the launch of our new Portrait of a Neshova Graduate Digital Learner portfolios this year. And more information about our Neshova, Portrait of a Neshova Digital Graduate, Portrait of a Neshova, this is a mouthful. I'm not even gonna look at my words, I'm just gonna say it, that will make it easier. Portrait of a Neshova Graduate Digital Learner portfolios will be provided in the next update, the next topic. I'm sure I've written it again. The next update is relative to our new portfolios at the high school, and I'd like to provide credit to Assistant Principal Janine Boulay, Dr. Boynton, our Director of Digital Learning and Innovation, Jed Stefanoits, and our high school teacher, Portrait of a Neshova Graduate Working Group. That group worked diligently this summer to launch our new Portrait of a Neshova Graduate portfolios, which will happen this year. These portfolios are intended to provide a connection between our competencies, learning in the classroom and outside of the classroom, and most importantly, provide students an opportunity to tell their own story with embedded choice. Students will work through their portfolios this year during homeroom with the expectation those will then transfer into the classroom work next year. The goal will be for students to showcase one artifact per competency by the end of this school year. Our hope is that the portfolios will be a work of celebration and accomplishment, and also be useful tools for our students to help complement the college and job application process. Student seniors will look to showcase their portfolios in the spring. Last topic? Okay, last. The final teaching and learning update is in support of our new literacy curriculum and the partnership that we share with our families. Curriculum Director Laura Paddington and I will be hosting three family information sessions for families to learn more about our new EL curriculum and all of its parts, and how families can help support their children at home. These sessions serve as the official launch as well of our NRSC Family University, with more to come on that front. Interested families are asked to register for one of three sessions. We are providing one in-person session and two virtual sessions, and we will also be providing a recording of one of the virtual sessions for those families who are able to attend. Families can find the registration information in last week's comment linked in the superintendent's report, and we will provide it again in this week's comment on Friday.
Thank you. So as you can see, the opening report tends to be a beefy one as we're covering our summer activities in the opening of the school, but we would love to entertain any questions in the committee.
Let's take it one half at a time. So is there anything about the opening of the school, the food services update, Director of Human Resources Transportation, or Innovation Pathways?
I just wanted to, I guess, highlight to the community and ask if people wanna give feedback about the food, the new nutrition program, and were interested in advisory committee, would they reach out?
So with regards to the advisory, that will go out, or I would say invites for that will probably go out through the comment.
Okay.
And we'll give that repeated message over a couple of weeks to get the equal opportunity. And then as far as feedback goes, it can go to me, or it can go to the director at Whitsons, whose email is available on the website, so, thank you.
Great. Anything else on the first half of the superintendent's update?
Did I include the transportation part?
Yes.
I just wanna say thank you. I think that was a really responsible decision that the district made.
You're welcome.
Actually, I think, I know that the transportation piece was a cost savings that we had identified in the budget the last time around. Is there a cost increase as a result of this?
But versus the fact of going to the second bidder, there will be. We'll understand more how that shakes out later, and I'm sure Mr. Mal Karen will be reporting a budget more in subcommittee on how that projects over the year.
Great. Okay. Let's move on to the strategic work, the second half of the update. Any questions?
Yeah, the Summer Academy, so that's an optional opportunity available to educators at Neshova who wanna, who need relizancer, is that kind of how some of that?
So it's an opportunity for some of the sessions to receive PDPs for relizancer, and some of the opportunities are just to continue professional learning.
Okay, so you said 100 educators took part?
Yeah, 110.
That's awesome. How many, what percentage of educators did that happen?
Somewhere near 30, that's about 30%. Almost 30%.
And some of the educators participated in more than one session. Any other questions? Shonda, was that a question? Okay. I would just like to comment on the portfolio piece. I think it's an excellent way to help vision for the Portrait of a Graduate come to life and make it real for the kids. It's hard to kind of bring these things into the classroom, so this is an excellent way of doing it. Are you, when you said that they're gonna highlight them at the end of the year, will there be a showcase?
Senior, at the senior spring showcase, that's your intention.
Seniors do share their?
That's, that's the intention right now. The ideas, you know, and plans are still developing, but that's the goal right now. I would love with permission from the students, identified students, if appropriate, to perhaps share an example or two with the committee if appropriate.
That would be excellent.
Just have a clarifying question. When you say they identify students, does that mean going forward, not every student and every, so like all incoming freshmen necessarily?
Every student.
Okay.
Permission from identified students to share.
Gotcha. Fair enough. Awesome. Any other questions about the update? All right, so you have been busy, as always. Thank you for that update, everyone. Let's move the next item on the agenda. So we're gonna head over to new business, and the first piece here is our Student Services Director, Andrew Quinn. I'm gonna let Kirk queue it up.
Thank you. I want to invite to the table Ms. Lorraine Vivanche. You had a chance to meet Lorraine last year, and she is our Director of Student Services, and we couldn't be more delighted to have her. And tonight, as for those of you that have been on the committee for a while, you're familiar with the entry process that I do with the leaders in our school system. For those of you that are new to the committee, the entry process is a way for a leader to come in and spend some time sort of assessing the landscape of the school district, to learn about the school district, to learn about the people, to learn about the cultures, the traditions, the strengths, identify areas of places that we can work on or grow. And so tonight, Mr. Vivanche is here and is going to spend a few minutes just describing you the plan. This is a brief presentation tonight. You will get a more comprehensive presentation of the findings later. And Mr. Vivanche, I believe we accelerated that timeline for you, and we're looking at December as the time to come back and share some findings. So with that, I turn it over to Ms. Quinn.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am so happy to be sitting here in front of you. As you all know, I have been doing this work in another community for years, but coming here has really excited and reinvigorated my work and my passion for this work. And part of that is coming here and being welcomed into the community, even from the first week. I, phone calls, knocks on my door, people coming in, they're so, the staff are very passionate about the work they do, and they wanna share as much as they can with me. And so it's been so welcoming, and families have been contacting me throughout the summer to provide feedback, ask for, if they can give any help or assistance, so it's really made it an easy transition for me to work here. There is a lot to look at. I have Student Services, it looks at not just special education, but also now 504 students in that process sits under the department, along with early childhood and nursing. Even though we have directors for that, I assist and kind of monitor some of their work as well. So part of my work is just really looking at the whole aspects of the entire department, and where, where we're seeing some, you know, strengths of the department, where we need some growth. I have three women in my office that have been in the district for many, many years, Linda, Liz, and Kathy, and they, I couldn't do this without them. They have provided me with all the information that I need quickly, and they know where everything is. The other positive aspect of this process for me is really looking at, we have a new IEP rollout with the state this year. So it's actually a good opportunity for us to really dive into how we write IEPs, what service delivery is on them, because we have to transition to this new process. And so all the team chairs are helping with that currently right now. I have weekly meetings with them. That will continue throughout the year. But my overall goal is to really look at the services under special education of 504, what's being recommended, what needs that the students and families have and are, how they're interacting with the school and the services in the building and the classroom. What instructional approaches are schools and teachers taking? What materials are they using? And professional development that's needed. I'm also, under the 504, really diving more into what does guidance look like, what social emotional supports are happening. I reviewed the MTSS manual that the Assistant Superintendent or a friend in a group have designed, and diving into that for what services are needed for instruction and professional development for students and families. And it's just really trying to understand, how does the community feel about this department? What's the history of the department? What's the history of the department? How can we bridge and make communication better and make sure that we're, families feel comfortable talking to us and that we're listening and responding in the way that we should? So that's all the work that sits in front of me between now and December. I will say it's always ongoing work and always should be ongoing work. And so I'll be doing a lot of that work just by looking at documentation. I've set up weekly meetings with the team chairs. I sit on the cabinet, so I get information that way. I've met with all the principals to date. I do go into the buildings on a weekly basis to meet with staff. I've met with CPAC Chair Pamela Duggan twice now, and so we're ongoing with that communication as well. I will be starting to send out regular communications to the community so that they kind of hear that I'm here, I'm for them, if they want to reach out, if any family wants to reach out. So I will be doing that. But I will be looking at all the policies, reviewing the previous fiscal history of the department, and making some decisions around what might be some next steps that can make the department run more smoothly or support our students' needs.
Thank you, Mr. Manch.
Yes, it's a quick timeline, but I'm excited about it and...
When we sat down to lay down the timeline, we said it would be important for us to really wrap up this entry process and accelerate it a little bit this year in preparation for budget season, and any recommendations that could come out of this process that could have a budgetary impact. So that's one of the reasons for the acceleration of this process. You'll notice in terms of the format of this plan, you might recognize it because to demonstrate the collegiality we have on our team, I know both Mr. Mocaren and Assistant Superintendent Friend have volunteered their efforts through their entry processes with Mr. Manch. So it's put a lot of good teamwork and camaraderie on the team as well.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you so much for appearing and helping us understand your trajectory. We are excited for your work. I would just like to point out that Lindsay is our CPAC liaison.
Perfect.
And so, you know, working with Pam Duggan and with you, I know that all things good are coming our way. So I wonder if the committee has any questions or comments? Amy?
Yeah, I was wondering, are you going to be very involved in the equity work that they're doing around looking at students with 504s and IEPs and how, what classes they're taking and being a big part of that conversation here at the beginning?
Yes, I always find that to be a central piece of the work that, that this job entails, even before the equity report, because you really want to look at, are students being inclusive? Are they being included in the community? Are they being included in their school? And what does that, what feedback am I getting around that? So I'm always very much focused on that because you really want students to get the full benefit of the general education environment and their community environment.
I have more of a question.
Yeah, of course.
My other question is, I know you're going to be looking at reports and talking to different people. I was wondering if you were going to be visiting like academic support rooms, like getting a feel for what's going on?
Oh, yes.
In some of those classrooms and stuff?
Yes. I, I don't like to sit in there. I actually made a visit. I've toured two buildings already since the start of the school year to really go in during the school day, and I'll be making that a regular practice just so I can see the instruction, talk to the staff, see the students in action, and really help. I'm also meeting with the team chairs in their buildings so that I get a feel for the culture and how things are really working and running.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everybody, so moving the agenda, the next item here, we had a small snafu on the school committee calendar. I think that one of the meeting dates mistakenly landed on April vacation.
Mistakenly.
And so we are just going to reference the meeting material. If you could look at the, in the materials, the revised calendar, the April date, the April school committee meeting date, has just been moved to the 30th. Is that right, Alita?
Yes.
So that then gives us back-to-back meetings, but with the end of the year, asking fear is coming at us, I think that it's probably a necessary element. Why don't we, if there's any discussion before taking a motion, I'd be welcome. All right, so maybe Amy can make the motion for us.
Do I move to amend the 24, 25 school committee meeting calendar that moves the April 23rd meeting to April 30th?
Next second. Thanks, Lindsay. Any discussion? Everybody's okay with it, so let's vote. All those in favor? All right, so that motion passes, so it will be amended. I think it was, I'm going to give credit to Jackie Spataro for bringing that to me, so thank you out there, Jackie, if you're watching. We appreciate you helping us all the time. So that was that. All right, now on to unfinished business. Look at us cruising right along. It's a record.
Let's keep going. We're on a roll. Let's keep going.
So the salary ranges is the next item on unfinished business. And so what we would like to do is take a motion on a decision that, can I, you want to say something first?
I was just going to ask if you want me to set it up.
That would be wonderful. So we are, we are going to take a vote on the salary ranges and address some of the things that were perhaps a little out of date, but yeah, Kirk, help us understand what's going on.
Great, thank you. In your pack is included a memo that was provided to you for our executive session session on August 29th, and we conducted that session in executive session because it was relative to bargaining for a contract relative to our Human Resources Director position. But it was at that time that we took the salary ranges for non-rent personnel administrators from 2020, March of 2022, and did the repair work essentially of applying the increases that were expressed in the unit rate contract over the previous three years to develop in the table that's also in your pack, the recommended salary ranges for fiscal year 25. And action was taken in that executive session, and so as required, the committee just needs to replicate that action in open session for the benefit of the public.
Excellent. So Amy, would you mind taking the motion?
I move to approve the salary ranges as presented on August 29th, 2024, and outlined in the memo in the meeting materials.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion for the public? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of salary range adjustment. So, what's that? So next we have the school committee manual, and you guys have the most up-to-date version that is in the meeting materials. This is something that we worked with our communications subcommittee under the guidance of Sharon and others. You guys renovated that manual to make it more user-friendly. We are tonight going to take a vote to approve the manual, but Sharon, would you like to give us any additional information on this? Anything we need to know?
I don't think there's any additional information. You and Amy went through it during the summer, and so we've had some really close eyes looking at it, and I think the only, the question I had was that, what I sent to you is, I feel like there's still some formatting that needs to be done on it. So although the content is complete, I think that there still will be some formatting to make it a little bit more approachable.
Yeah, so that is long. If the committee is okay with changing the bullet sizes and indentations, we are going to take the manual, the substance of the manual as is linked in the materials. So Amy?
I move to approve the school committee manual as presented on August 29th, 2024.
Okay, and that date, by the way, was the workshop. Is that right? Yeah, so that's why we keep calling that date out. So at the workshop, we did look this over, and we kind of approved everything that the subcommittee had done last year in their meetings. So do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Sharon's hand. Any discussion?
A couple things.
Oh, Shonda.
It sort of goes beyond formatting, but there are strike throughs in the document that haven't been removed, like under approval of other administrative positions.
Yep.
So I think those should be removed.
So that is something that we fixed at the workshop. What page are you on, Shonda?
Six.
Six. Yep.
So Shonda, are you saying that that is not formatting?
Well, the example was bullet points. Just want to make sure that we clean that up too. If you want to call that formatting, that's fine, but...
Yeah, so they've been stricken, and they should no longer be there. So we can just delete those.
But can you get me access to that document?
I don't have it anymore. I'm not quite sure how that happened, but you know. I shall. Thank you. I have four Google accounts, so it can get a little hairy over here.
That too is annoying.
Okay, so I'm going to share it with you, Sharon, and make sure that you can edit. Thank you.
And to that end, some of the links aren't accessible because they're not shared. So like the one in public hearings?
What page?
Eight. I haven't checked them all, but probably should make sure that everything we link to is accessible. By you specifically, like you couldn't get to all of them?
Which one, Shonda?
Page eight, public hearings, the link to appendix seven.
How weird. I don't know why I am like the hoarder of these documents right now, but hold on. I moved the link.
Proven as being the chair.
I didn't even create these, so I don't know why I'm hoarding them. Can you try again, Shonda?
Sure.
And that solves that problem?
Ta-da!
Yeah, that's one problem solved, but Sharon and I will go through and make sure, or Sharon will go through and make sure that everything is accessible, the links. Anything else, any other discussion?
So a couple things. First of all, were the strike throughs in here the only changes ever made, or did we discuss the changes at the retreat?
At the workshop?
Yeah, because I find it difficult to see what's changed without the strike throughs.
The strike throughs are the only change at the workshop.
Which is what we had seen presented to us in June, so that was when we reviewed like them more.
And the only other thing is, we didn't do the workshop on the 29th. I'm pretty sure it was a couple weeks before that?
The 20th, I was a little confused to...
The 20th, 29th, our executive session.
So is it 21st?
Yep.
Does that ring a bell? So we can shift, Amy, do you mind if we amend your motion to say as presented on August 21st?
That's totally fine with me, or we could just say as presented tonight.
Yeah, although you've already amended it, so you've already motioned it. Sharon, is that okay? You were the seconder, so we're going to shift that motion to, to say August 21st, 2024, at the workshop.
So can I just thought, if you want to look at a little bit more detail the changes that were in the manual, I can, I think I can, give you access to the one that we had last spring, which was the manual with the comments next to it saying this corresponds to this section. And the reason for that, and the reason why it wasn't redlined is because there was so much reformatting and condensing of sections that...
Difficult.
It was difficult to present it as a redlined...
So I don't think my level of interest or concern rises to justify that level of work, so that's not necessary, but thank you. And one, the very last link in the document also is not accessible.
Page 20.
It's a big document, we understand.
Honestly, I don't have access to that last one either. I wonder, Sharon, if you have access to that page 20? It just says link to the appendices.
I will check. I will make sure that all of the links are working, and I know some of that stuff was, Karen was working on, and so some of it may have been shared to me and to Amy.
Yeah, Karen worked on that link.
Only, which might be why you don't have access to those links.
I'm not sure.
Just reach out to the, if you need us, Chief can open that account and change the document, if maybe, just let me know.
Okay, so if that went away with Karen, then we can fix that. All right, everybody.
So I hate to be persnickety bad, but what does the proposed, what do we, what's the wording we're approving right now as far as the B and B's motion is concerned?
As amended, it would be moved to approve the school committee manual as presented on August 21st, 2024.
Subject to formatting and link revisions or something along those lines?
All right, any other questions? All right, so this was a beast of a task, and we really appreciate you guys keeping it on in communication. Shonda has another question.
Is this link not there?
Oh, it is, but what about that? That explains what was wrong, guys.
I don't know. That looks like it should have a link there.
Just another link thing that needs to be fixed.
Broken links. Okay, we'll fix all the broken links. All right, so all those in favor of the policy manual approval, or excuse me, the school committee manual approval? All right, thanks, guys. Yeah, good job there, Sharon, for all of that. So the next item on the agenda is school committee goals presentation, and I am going to, hopefully without objection from the committee, move this to a future agenda, the next agenda. Just giving subcommittees a little bit more time to formulate. I know that all the subcommittees are meeting in the month of September, but do you think that it would be best if we moved this conversation to the first week of October? Meeting our third meeting.
I would.
Is that open for discussion? Yeah, I'm asking.
I would prefer that we present on those sooner rather than later because there's work that, there's timelines in place in terms of certain activities that the committees are working on. And I don't know if that's possible, that everybody meet before the, and be prepared to talk about subcommittee goals.
Is it necessary for the committee to ratify goals before you can do that work?
I think for some groups.
Do we need all the subcommittee goals to be approved at the same time?
Not necessarily.
So do it as they are ready?
I wonder if everybody will have met by September 25th.
We're meeting the second time next, B and W's meeting the second time next week, so...
So you're good?
We should be okay.
We're meeting next week.
Personnel is meeting before that, right?
Communication is meeting next week, too.
Policies, I guess.
Building committees always meet.
Would if you, I mean, if some subcommittees weren't ready to present the goals, at least talk about progress on goals.
I actually think we're going to be ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Because I'm recognizing that our personnel subcommittees, our agenda is about setting goals. I imagine budget and warrant similarly?
Well, our goal seems to be along the lines of streamlining the whole meeting process, which begs the question, that should be an agenda hiding for a near-future meeting? Like, we've talked about the retreat, the idea of how we could possibly streamline these meetings. The consent agenda? So is that something we should be discussing as a whole committee as a whole?
Yes, like that's not a budget and warrant conversation necessarily as much as it is a whole committee goal. But we could, we could do that on September 25th, because I think that's not the only whole committee goal that is on the list. So hold on to that, don't let us forget.
I'm just saying, if we're talking about items for next agenda, is that something that should be added to the next agenda?
Let's say, let's put it under school committee goals, and then we'll make sure that we address the consent agenda and be more efficient. Even more efficient than we are right now. Just saying. So without objection, let's move that to the September 25th meeting, and hopefully all the subcommittees will have their goal, our... all the subcommittees will have their goal articulated to some degree and ready to share that evening, so that the school committee can discuss as a whole and then hopefully approve. Okay? Which will then put us in a position to not have an additional meeting of thought. We will be presenting and voting on our goals in the next meeting all at one time. Just fair warning on that. Okay, so moving on to our next item, subcommittee and advisory reports. One of the things that our school committees decided to do is kind of condense this item and then just open the floor for any subcommittee chair who has something that they need to share at this moment in time. This may be premature, unless the, I imagine that the building committee might have something to share?
I don't think they might have to share. We're meeting tomorrow night. Progress is moving along swimmingly. I think that, as a personal comment, I think that Consigliere has done an excellent job in creating the pre-construction environment. I think the front of the school looks absolutely fabulous. I think it looks better now than it did before they started the renovations. They did an excellent job, and we're meeting tomorrow night, and I have more for the next agenda.
Yes. I just want to echo Attorney Gleason's point. And in preparing for the opening of school, you know, you always expect delays on the opening of school. It was amazing how well everything was planned to help the transition of students and faculty and staff in relatively minimal delays. Mr. McCarron, we closed the transportation department to make it all happen. Consigliere was on site, observing, watching, making adjustments. They still are. As a matter of fact, we talked about that in OAC today. So thank you, Attorney Gleason, for recognizing, and because I do think they did an outstanding job of getting this started for the school year, because that matters when it comes to people's attitudes about the project.
Yeah, I would just add that I had to go to a soccer game at the far corner of the campus, right, that upper field yesterday, and it's a bit of a walk, but it is completely accessible. It is actually quite lovely to walk the field back there. I didn't realize how expansive that softball and into the tree there's a path. So I thought that considering how bad it could have been to access those fields, it was actually really good, and everybody was doing a great job getting back there. I would say, too, that a little shout-out to Dr. Boynton. If you don't have a high schooler, you perhaps did not receive this video, but it is, it was an instructional video on how the student should enter the parking lot, and the way that she did it was she actually sat in the driver's seat, and the wolf was in the passenger seat, and somebody was in the backseat. I don't know if it was you, Kirk, or somebody. Somebody was in the backseat.
You don't reveal trade secrets.
Filming it, taught, and so there was a voiceover talking about to the students how you entered the building, and Kate replicated it, and she drove, and she went in, and she parked, and then she left. And my kid was completely aware, I'm sure most and everybody was, completely aware of how to make it happen. So there were many layers of attention given to this, not just our construction team, but also the high school team, so I appreciate that.
Well, to that, that excitement and that level of oversight did trickle down. I think that it's worth mentioning, too, about our athletic director and all the coaches. I mean, they're being very flexible, and it's been really great as a new high school parent to see how they're communicating all of the changes, and the kids seem great.
Yeah, I was just going to weigh in as the parent of a kid who's on the soccer team. That has also been much easier than I anticipated with the buses, bringing the kids to Forbush and bringing them back to the high school. There were a lot of changes that were rolled out, and it went well.
So we thought the hard part was getting the committees to approve, but that was not the hard part. You guys are in the hard part, so thank you.
That's a great team.
Yeah, yeah. So thanks, everyone. Any other subcommittee reports now? Seems budget and warrant may be zoned, who's not, that they will report out next time? All right, guys, so items for next agenda. You can see the school committee planning calendar is posted. I hope everybody has viewing access at a minimum. So our next meeting, as you know, is going to be September 25th. Everything is on there. So school committee goals, we will do that then. Kirk, can we talk a little bit about superintendent goals? Do you know what that is, that bullet?
Those are my goals.
Do you think you're going to be doing your presentation at that meeting?
I was planning on it.
Okay, so the personnel...
I'll always take the direction of the chair.
I think we might need to push it a little bit, because personnel is going to meet a day or two before to identify all the indicators.
That's quite fine. We're well on the way to actually developing the document, and we're working on it with our principal team tomorrow, so I will take the direction of the chair.
Okay, so maybe next Wednesday, we can meet, you and I can talk about
Okay.
what's back there.
Quite fine.
And Sharon, maybe we can even invite Kirk to Personnel if you feel necessary? I mean, nobody's been elected a chair of a subcommittee yet, but I'm trying to, Sharon, because she's taking the lead at this moment. So if we want to invite Kirk, feel free.
Okay, so do you want to do that for that meeting, that Monday night?
I mean, we already did a lot of the work at the workshop. I don't know that it's necessary, but maybe we make Kirk aware of it, and if he wants to attend, it's his problem.
Do you think we all have access to this?
I think you do.
Because that says seven people have access to it, and I don't have access to it.
No, that's what they're currently looking at it.
No. I can't find it in the document, Sharon, but that's why, oh wait, maybe, I see 23, 24, but not 24, 25.
After you deal with that, I have a question.
So it is marked as anyone with the link can view, and so...
The link is on the website.
It's on the website, and so if you guys go to the homepage of the school committee, on the left taskbar, which is not viewable on a mobile device, by the way. It's kind of a funky thing. But if you go on your desktops or laptops, there's a calendar dropdown, and let's see. Do you see it there?
SC meeting calendar, SC planning calendar. Got it, okay, got it. Thank you.
Oh, you got it. Okay, good. All right, that was... So if you guys have, so obviously Kirk and I meet every Wednesday to form the agendas. We will be resuming that practice. If you don't have any ideas right now, and something comes to you, just email me, and I'll put it on my list to talk with Kirk to set the next agenda for the 25th. But if there are any ideas now?
This is going back to the personnel meeting about the indicators, and there was an indicator survey that went out, and I just remembered I didn't do it. So then I went to click on it, and then I remembered that the indicators that it was linked to may have been an older version.
They were fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we solved that problem. Remember, we discovered that they were actually most up-to-date.
Thank you.
Superintendents. So we're good there.
Thank you.
So if you didn't do that survey at the workshop indicating what you would like the superintendent to focus on as the indicators, that survey's still open, and Personnel's meeting next week. So feel free to weigh in. If you don't want to, that's okay, too, although I do encourage you to do so.
Under unfinished business, we, I would like to, we have not met with Dirje this year. They're meeting as a group on October 1st for the first time, so I'd like to request that you push back.
And so what I'm going to do is just throw it out to October 9th, and if you still want to push out beyond that?
I would push out beyond that.
Yeah, okay. So now we're looking at October 23rd, perhaps? Let's just see how close. Anything else on the future agenda?
One thing for me. Just want to make the committee aware, November 6th is the date of the mask joint conference. Myself, Attorney Gleason, and Mr. McCarron will be attending the conference this year. So we'll have, I think we're going to do the OWL setup so that we can attend the meeting remotely that evening, and Ms. Friend will occupy my seat here. And I just want to make the committee there. So I took some of the business and shifted it out of the 6th to make for a friendly agenda for that evening, but it is an important evening, is that's the night that our principals will bring forward their school improvement plans.
And I feel like last year, we flip-flopped the remote and in-person meetings, so if that's an option for you, although I would like to see Laura at a meeting. If you do want to flip-flop, that's an option.
We can talk and play.
Okay. Any other future agenda items?
We're going to have policy stuff, but we have to meet about that and kind of hammer that out, so stuff is coming.
We love it. We love policy. Okay, so just let us know, Amy, what you need. Anything else? All right, so as always, guys, just stay in communication with me if you need to, and I will help you on that. So the agenda says that the next item is adjournment. For an all-time record, I'm going to move to adjourn right now at 7:26 PM. Do I have a second? I think that Cohen got it. All those in favor? Any opposed? No. Okay, good night, everybody.